I want to order the August 27 Oshkosh Council Meeting. Can you please take the role?
Mugerauer.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Paschal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Hall Mary.
Here.
President Seven.
And Councilmember Mugerauer will lead us in the invocation.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do the things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
Next, we have troop number 2497 to lead us in the pledge. They're from Oakland Elementary. All right, thank you, girls.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So what I'd like you to do now is introduce yourself. Tell us what school you go to and what was your favorite badge that you worked on for Girl Scouts?
My name is Aurora and I go to Oakland Elementary and I'm nine years old. And my favorite badge that I worked on is cooking.
Cooking, there we go.
My name is Lily. I go to Oakland Elementary School and my favorite badge was the cookie badge.
Hi, my name is Gabby. I go to Oakland Elementary School and my favorite badge that I earned was the cookie badge.
Hi, my name is Kelly. I'm nine years old and I go to Oakland Elementary School and I can't pick because they're all so good.
Hello, my name is Maddie and I go to Valley Christian and my favorite badge was the cookie one, too.
Go ahead and give that to your troop leader. It's a certificate of appreciation. Next, we have introduction of city staff. Chief Smith.
Well, good afternoon. I'm happy to introduce you to our newest lieutenant with the Oshkosh Police Department, Lieutenant Matt Ziegler. Matt's been with the Oshkosh Police Department for 11 years. The PFC approved his promotion on August the 8th and Matt served certainly as a patrol officer. He was also a patrol sergeant. He was my training sergeant most recently. He's also one of our SWAT team commanders. He was a SWAT team sergeant and now he's a SWAT team leader. He's well-rounded in everything he does. We're very happy to have him as our newest lieutenant and we look forward to him doing great things.
Next, we have two presentations. The first one is Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation Midyear Report.
Madam Mayor, Council, appreciate your time this evening. I think this is kind of an annual update, but I think we also do it, I think, in the wintertime as well. We do this two times a year. Couple things real quick. Just want to offer thanks and appreciation both for your support, past, present, and hopefully future as well. Our request this year is the same as it was last year, so budget neutral from that standpoint. But we appreciate your investment in this organization as we do all of our other private and public sector and nonprofit investors as well. A couple things. One, what I included in your packet for tonight was our midyear report. You get a little sneak peek at that. Tomorrow, it's going to all the homes and businesses in this community that receive the Oshkosh Herald. So very much appreciate their partnership on that distribution as well. Additionally, those of you who know me, and I think all of you do, know that I spent a lot of time talking about the importance of teamwork. And as it relates to our team, the last four years, we've had just amazing continuity with our team. And then recently, I was caught boasting a little bit about the amazing continuity and the great team we had. And so I a little bit cursed myself from that standpoint. And so Amy's gone to work for the city of Oshkosh in a full-time role. And Kimberly, whose husband got a promotion in Milwaukee, very happy for them, very sad for us. She is going to choose to be there as opposed to commute to Oshkosh every day. But the reason I mention Kimberly is virtually every site search that has gone of any significance from a commercial standpoint has happened in the Oshkosh, Greater Oshkosh community over the last couple of years has come through her desk. And that's significant because every economic development project starts with a site search or a building search. So her relationship that she's built with the commercial real estate community, which was one of the objectives that this council had when you created, helped create Greater Oshkosh Community Development, was to build a stronger relationship with the real estate community. And she has done that from a lot of different ways in the last four years. So the good news is we have some great candidates and look forward to filling her role here very shortly. A couple of things. Is one, over the last few years, we've spent a lot of time as an organization adapting to the current economic times, which means that our strategic plan has really been geared towards taking care of our own, taking care of our existing businesses, ramping up our business retention expansion program, which we've invested a lot of our effort, time, and resources into doing this year based on where we were four years ago. Workforce development, which is on everybody's mind, and also entrepreneurship and building the startup ecosystem of the Greater Oshkosh community, which Audra and our team has largely taken that ball and run with it. A couple of things I just wanted to mention real quick, and I know I only have a few minutes here tonight, so this is going to be the highest level of high-level reports. But I certainly encourage you to take a look at our weekly updates and stop by our office and set up a meeting with me and visit about anything you want to talk about as it aligns with the city's priorities. A couple of you have already done that, taken time to do that, so I encourage you to do that, too. I do want to mention a couple of data points. And data doesn't define our organization, but certainly one of the things we always want to do is because we're in a competitive position as an economic development organization, we want to know how we're doing stacking up with our peers. And I think that's important to constantly be benchmarking where we stand. One of the things that has also definitely influenced a lot of what we do is trying to open up more markets for our companies. And exporting has been very important to this region over the last number of years. And if you look at the trend line comparing the Greater Oshkosh region with the other metros across the state, from 2013 to 2017, Oshkosh ranks number one in the state with the growth of international trade and exporting, selling products and services around the world. So that remains a very important aspect of economic development as we look at it. Additionally, as the labor force has tightened, wages have gone up. That's a good thing. But every other region's wages have gone up, too. So while we have had an increase in wages of 10% from 2013 to 2017, that still ranks eighth among the metros across the state of Wisconsin, 12 metros across the state of Wisconsin. So you can kind of see how we benchmark and rate with that category. And then also, I thought it was important to mention the labor force participation rate. So obviously, as we know, we've experienced a lot of economic growth here in the Greater Oshkosh area, but not a lot of population growth relative to other parts of the country especially. So as it relates to building a workforce, we really examine the labor force participation rate. And the more that we can boost that number, get anybody who wants a job a job and get them working, the more I think we help to mitigate some of the issues related to a very tight labor force in the Oshkosh market. And then finally, I think it's also important to look at how we stack up from an economic strength of our region relative to others. And Policom earlier this year looked at the Oshkosh-Nina area stacked up to the other 300-plus metros across the country, and we ranked 83rd, which is good enough for third in the state of Wisconsin. So economic strength in our region continues to be very strong. So as it relates to what we do, I want to kind of pull that back here for a second. So if you look at the first four-plus years of existence of Greater Oshkosh, in terms of projects that we have helped from a small standpoint or guided all the way through the process, that portfolio translates to $138 million in new capital investment, 2,000-plus retained jobs, and 655 new jobs. So again, we really put a lot of effort in the retained jobs because if you look at the companies that we meet with, every one of those companies has 10% to 15% vacancy with the positions that they're trying to fill. So you look at job creation, it really has to start with our existing companies and helping them fill their jobs. And then also benchmarking with business touches. And how many companies are we talking to every year? We have a goal, obviously, of reaching 150 of those every year. And each year over the last four years, that number has gone up. I also wanted to talk about another number related to that here in a second. Companies are growing. As you can see from the midyear report, some of the company expansions that have taken place over the last year, you can see a few of them here up and down the corridor, the Oshkosh corridor. Anything from Viking Electric to formerly Power Grid Solutions, which is now AZZ. They were acquired in the last couple of years. And a few others as well. Foreign imprint, for example, purchasing the lot just to the west of them in the southwest industrial park. Recent projects, a couple of things that we're very pleased to be a part of is obviously originally bringing the parties together for the Aviation Plaza area, making the introductions between the folks related to the mine shaft. Obviously, we're working with Extreme Customs probably for the last 18 to 20 months. And then also, obviously, those conversations that happened with the city. So again, very important to bridge those conversations and those connections. So our team was right in the thick of things there from the start. Trio Academy. It's kind of fun to have been here now four years because you drive up and down the major thoroughfares of Oshkosh and you can point to different companies you're able to help. This was probably one of the most rewarding ones we were able to work with over the past year. So Trio Academy, they're located in the former Oshkosh Door Sales Building, so to speak, basically on the border of Universal Business Park and the Southwest Business Park or Industrial Park. So that became kind of an issue just because it's actually located in the Universal Park? Can't remember. Alan, do you remember?
Industrial Park, yeah.
Industrial Park, yes. Because it's not an industrial-based business. So we had to work through some of our Industrial Development Committee channels to make sure that they could stay there. But basically, Trio is an organization that provides specialized services and assistance to children with cognitive challenges, so to speak. So think about kids facing autism issues, for example, autistic. So the only one of its kind in Winnebago County, they're in danger potentially of leaving because they were helped to find a location, but they were also determined later to be within the flight path of Whitman Airport. So we had to work with the county to help them understand that they are more than just an educational facility. They're actually providing services that are needed in our community. So through that process, we were able to help them. And good news, on Friday, when I attended their open house, they were able to stay at their current location. So that's definitely a win for our community. A few other things, just to turn back the clock again. I think for some of you, this is the first presentation I've made since you joined the council. So obviously, we've been partnering with the city over the last several years on the Transload Facility and project and opportunity for our community. We've had a number of different meetings with companies and also within the last couple of weeks with a developer who's interested in building potential spec buildings in the Southwest Industrial Park near and within a close proximity of the Transload Facility. So we really see this as a continued opportunity for our community. I was at the New North Summit, or not Summit, the meeting last week, New Rep, and they had talked about another meeting they want to set up for intermodal facilities. And I said, "Well, maybe Oshkosh could be a candidate for that because obviously we have a Transload facility. Let's see what else we could do here in the Southwest Industrial Park." Out the Fifth Ward Brewery, which was a Capital Catalyst candidate. We were happy to, was one of the first loans we were able to make through the Capital Catalyst Fund to help those individuals start that business. It's been a big success. And of course, Oshkosh Corporation, which will be open within the next couple of months. I talked to them. They're really excited about the direction that that's going here at the end of 2019. Our BRNE program, we decided to take that up another level this year. So we've invested in an economic development program called Synchronist, which allows us to sit down with companies and ask them a whole gambit of issues ranging from rating community services to infrastructure providers to the workforce of the area, their market. Oshkosh is a place to do business, which again is another step forward beyond just business touches and talking to folks, but actually gathering data and metrics that we can report back to you so that you know how the city's doing in developing a positive business climate for the community. Property searches. So you can see the property searches that we, these do not include anything that we carried into 2019 or anything that was started in 2019. And again, I continue to say that especially right now, cost of construction and geopolitical issues and whatnot, building is not the first option for a lot of companies. They want to move into an existing building. So the last couple of days, we've spent some time highlighting the former Avalon Papers building, which is now available. It's probably the most attractive industrial space we currently have on the market in the Southwest Industrial Park. And I look forward to working with the folks behind that project as well. RLF Capital Catalyst, since its creation, we have $705,000 of awards that we have made, $405,000 from the RLF, $300,000 from Capital Catalyst. A few recent awards were New Hydraulics, Silver Creek Specialty Meats, Thunderbird Bakery, and RG Manufacturing, which actually came back for the second time with their growth in the Northwest Industrial Park. The Winnebago Catch a Ride Program. So this is the volunteer driver program that we partnered in setting up over the last couple of years. And you can see through June, we had 12 volunteer drivers that were driving people to work and 138 rides were given to people that did not have a vehicle or reliable transportation to get to work. We had a couple of calls today, so this number continues to grow. So I'm expecting that when we update those figures, it'll be well over 200 rides that were delivered for people that could not otherwise get to work. A few events that we've had. We're not an event-laden organization. We're not a networking organization as a specialty. But we do have some strategic educational type of events that we try to help our developers and businesses on, such as Opportunity Zone, new market tax credits, historic tax credits. And then also, we had a panel discussion with our folks in Fond du Lac about creative hiring strategies, which involves some of the companies in our area. You can see some photos from that event. AirVenture. So we had a very active presence at EAA this year for the 50th anniversary of AirVenture here in Oshkosh. We, again, were the lead sponsor for the career and education building, so to speak. We had a number of companies that participated in our job fair there. We had over 2,000 people that visited our booth space. And I know that because we made these little tags, luggage tags called, one side it says Greater Oshkosh Community Development and the other side it says Return to Oshkosh. So these were all over the grounds the week of AirVenture. Art did a good job of being a good salesperson and giving a lot of those out. But I think the most important thing was we were able to help a lot of companies hire people that week, including Basler Turbo, a company, obviously, in our own backyard. Another thing we did do is that we had somebody that was not able to attend for one of the time slots they had. So we called the Winnegamey Home Builders Association. We said, "Hey, we have a lot of people that walk by our booth and they're interested in moving to Oshkosh. They want to talk to somebody about building a home." So we reached out to Jody and they sat up for a few hours that we at AirVenture and really appreciated the ability to do that. In terms of community involvement, we're not just involved in our own stuff. We partner with a lot of other organizations in our community. Recently, I joined the board for Wave Robotics, a very important program for the youth of our community, developing technical skills. Audra serves on the Alta Resources Center for Entrepreneurship and Innovation at UW-Oshkosh with the Small Business Development Center. I've served on the Oshkosh Boys and Girls Club Strategic Planning Committee and a lot of other things down the line. So in terms of next steps, as I wrap this up a little bit, talked about really focusing on the need to further ramp up our BRNE program. Now that the aviation grant has wrapped up, that's one of Art's core responsibilities. So we're very happy that he can dedicate more time to one-on-one visits to company CEOs in the Greater Oshkosh community. We want to continue to focus on growing our population and workforce base, which obviously housing plays a big part of that. And we want to continue to improve our product. Again, we talked about spec buildings and really that being a potential opportunity now that we have a developer that wants to maybe come into this market and do that. And then continue to enhance our entrepreneurial ecosystem primarily through our Revolve Loan Fund and Capital Catalyst Program, but also some of our relationships with the SBDC and also G-Beta and also just different redevelopment endeavors that we've already been involved with over the last several years. So with that, I'm going to wrap up. I know I went past the time, but I had a lot of information I wanted to make sure I conveyed to you and I'll just pause and see if you had any questions.
I have a question.
Councilmember Paschal.
It's more of allowing you a plug, to do a plug. So your Catch a Ride Program, you said that there's a phone number for that?
There is.
So would you be willing to express that phone number right now?
Well, if you call our office, Julia, who's actually a senior at UW-Oshkosh, is our coordinator for our part of that program right now. So you can just call our office at 230-3322, expecting my number, but anybody in our office can answer it. And we'll make sure we connect you to the right people.
Now, another question related to that. Do you have an idea of what the age group is that's using that program?
Well, I think it's across the gambit. Really, any age group can utilize that program as long as it's a ride for employment. So if it's a college student that needs a ride because they're working across town or they have an internship with Oshkosh Corporation, or we had a number of folks, for example, in the South Industrial Park that need a ride. Because while we have a very good transit system here, there's no route that takes a bus to the industrial park. So that tends to be a popular choice for a lot of the workers in that area. But really, anywhere in the county, this is a countywide grant that we have to subsidize or offset, I should say, the volunteer driver's costs. We will pay their mileage costs to help them with whatever expenses they incur from that standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Mugerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. White, I always appreciate the update. It's always good to know where our investment is going and what we see for the future from your eyes and from the economic standpoint in Oshkosh and the Greater Oshkosh area. If memory serves me, I think you and your team may be coming to Long Range Finance, hopefully shortly, giving us an update maybe on the revolving loan fund and Capital Catalyst Fund so we can see where those things are at. In terms of funding levels and things like that, I assume you're probably going to ask for, describe your asks and wants for this budget cycle as well, I would assume.
From the Long Range Finance Committee?
Just at least presenting what you're looking for in the future and...
For the RLF program? Yeah, I think mostly there's a few tweaks that we need to make just to kind of update where things are that we've found since we've started these two programs over the last four or five years. So I think it's working, but obviously, we're in the business of deal-making. So we want to, if we can make more loans and still keep you protected as the city of Oshkosh, then obviously, we want to make sure we strike that right balance.
Deputy Mayor Herriman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. White, you've been out at EAA for the last four years promoting the Aviation Industrial Park. I know we're still waiting for Winnebago County to build the taxiway. Is that hurting the interest of that development because we have nothing in that park at this point?
I think it's helpful. I think that we have a airport manager with vision for the airport. And I think that's part of his vision is to make sure that we have a taxiway installed for the aviation park that connects to the Whitman Airport runway. Certainly, that's helpful. When I talk about improving our product, those are incremental steps, but important steps because companies don't have to be here. I think sometimes that's forgotten in this business. Companies have a lot of choices. So it's one thing to engage them for a week out of the year. It's another thing to have what they're looking for so that they come back and stay here. So all of that is very important.
Okay, I noticed on one of your slides, you were talking about affordable housing and single-family housing. I know we've talked about it at this level and had a presentation a couple of weeks ago. I hope you guys stay engaged in that conversation because I think that's a need. I think council members have talked about it. We need better single-family housing and better overall housing stock so that people can live in the city of Oshkosh.
Correct, yeah.
So thank you for bringing that to our attention again and that you stayed in that dialogue with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor, for making that comment. That was actually on my list of two items to ask about whether or not you were hearing from some of the employers in the community about the need for affordable workforce housing in order to accommodate their workforce. And in addition to that, there's some community conversations going on about the need for second and third shift childcare. Is that something else that comes up in some of the quality of life needs?
Yeah, I think, you know, you go back to what I said before about increasing the labor force participation rate, the percentage of people that are working. And that is one of the things that comes up consistently. I know we had one, I met with a leader for an organization called World Headquarters recently. I know they established a new daycare over there by Steins. I also met with one of the candidates I was talking to today who recently had a child and was talking about the struggles of finding reliable daycare without, you know, two or three-year waiting lists. What the messages she got back today. So it is an issue. I know that we've been behind the Oshkosh Housing Authority and their efforts to renovate that part of the weight rug facility. I talked to Sue again at church this weekend about it. It seems like every time we run into each other, that seems to be the topic of conversation.
And I'm sorry, did you say a two- or three-year waiting list for childcare?
Well, there's one, one of the daycare providers in Oshkosh who has high demand is a two- to three-year waiting list, which if you have an infant, obviously, you're not going to have an infant two to three years. They'll be a little older. So, but they're on the waiting list nonetheless because they lack the options.
Thank you, Mr. White. Next, we have Pam Ruder from Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods for their midyear report.
All right, I echo Jason's remarks, our midyear report for Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you our progress and certainly thank you for your support and your investment in Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. We are here to strengthen Oshkosh neighborhoods from the grassroots level, from the neighbors on up, and we really are working on neighbors knowing neighbors. I'm thrilled to work with an exceptional board of directors. We had 100% giving last year and looking for that again this year. We have forged new partnerships in 2019 that have me very excited about the direction that Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods is going. Our board is a working board. They're all assigned to various committees as we look to build relationships in Oshkosh and certainly look to... and certainly look to revitalize some of the Oshkosh neighborhoods. We do have a new logo. So we've gone away from the GOHNI acronym and are saying Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. It resonates a little bit better and certainly sends a little bit clearer message as far as what we do here in Oshkosh. So if you could update your use of that logo, if you would, that would be greatly appreciated.
So is it the logo and the name that's changed?
We're still Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated officially, but just using those middle three words, it's a little, little clearer for us. We are working on our neighborhood development. We have good news with the new addition of the Menominee North Neighborhood Association in May. We work with our neighborhood associations on a monthly basis as we bring the alliance together and give them an opportunity to hear some of the guest speakers that we bring in, but more importantly, give them a forum to exchange ideas and really try and advocate for some changes to happen within their neighborhood associations. We also work with Neighborhood Partners Network out of Goodwill Industries and have offered educational opportunity for our resident leaders and give opportunities for our core teams to go and, again, have some educational offerings. We did also, through this, through the neighborhood associations, we had several groups bring forward a Great Neighborhoods grant application. And again, thank you for your support of those as well. They are looking to improve the public spaces within their neighborhood association and have an excellent way to do that through that grant process. Mentioned the Menominee North. Our busiest time is obviously during the summer in Wisconsin as we get together and have different events in each of the 17 neighborhood associations. But thus far, we have tallied from January through June, the mid-year, 3,176 volunteer hours that our neighborhoods are, are investing in their community. And I think that's a, a huge note to make. It is significantly higher than last year, and last year we more than doubled what the prior year was. So looking forward to, again, getting more people involved with their neighborhood association. We do branding for the neighborhood associations and worked to get Historic Jackson a new logo this year. Their street top signs then will include the logo and go up in the near future. We'll also be doing street top signs for the Congress Field Neighborhood Association this year. One of the things that, that branding we do so that we can have a cohesive look for us as we go out into the neighborhood associations, but where it's really paying off right now is on social media. And we did hire this year Cora Strand as our neighborhood coordinator. She's taking the lead on our social media efforts beyond Facebook. We are now on Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn and really getting some good information out about our neighborhood associations with, not just within their neighborhood association, but without, within the community. Another community event that happened this year was the Rock the Block Oshkosh, the neighborhood revitalization that took place in the Sacred Heart Neighborhood Association. And I know I spoke to you earlier about this. The Rock the Block Oshkosh is unique because it is a collaboration. It is habitat for humanity. It is their trademark, the Rock the Block, but we are intentional that ours is Rock the Block Oshkosh because we brought in partners. Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods is a strong partner. The city of Oshkosh is a partner. We're looking to bring in additional partners. Rebuilding Together is, is joining us as we move forward and hopefully some other groups as well. But the good news is the 2019, our first ever, took place in April, and it was a success, a huge success is really what I would deem it. We do, we worked on 23 houses, over 130 volunteers came in. Because it was our first ever, we didn't really know what to expect. We didn't really plan well with an April date in Wisconsin. We did have some projects that weren't able to be done in April, but we came back in June and did some of the exterior work with those projects that the homeowners had completed an application, got approved, and most of those projects were done at no cost to those residents. And it truly was something that was echoed time and time again, how thankful they were that we came in and helped them with projects that they really had been putting off and really didn't necessarily have the tools to do. Here's an example of one of the before pictures. This house, we obviously went through, helped them, they wanted a complete change. They, they still had some work to do after Rock the Block as far, but they had a blank canvas for some ideas for landscaping. And we, again, also coordinated master gardeners into this group and helped with ideas as to what could be there. The young person that lived in that house was so thankful that they could see out of the, out of the windows now. Another one was a front porch, sanding that down, power washing it, and coming in with a fresh coat of paint was incredible image as far as an after. Stephen Wiley with the city also has a score sheet that he has taken different projects that were done in Sacred Heart. He had a before and after score sheet, and again, he's still working on that right now, but with a couple of that parcels that he had taken the before and after, he saw an increase of, of their scores by five percentage points. So we have some good visuals, we have some data, and we're going to continue to work with these neighborhood associations. And in fact, we already were working in the Rock the Block 2020, Congress Field, that we're out canvassing today. We had a town hall meeting last week, had 43 people attend the, the first town hall meeting, three times what we saw at Sacred Heart. So really good momentum there. We're out in the neighborhood, again, getting to people that may be a little bit shy or confused as to what it really is. We're going door-to-door, but inviting them to a second town hall meeting September 11th at 6:00. The applications for Rock the Block 2020, which will happen in May next year, are due October 1st, and we already have three applications submitted. I did give you a brochure for you to take a look at. We put together a couple of signature events this year through Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. First one was in July, we had Neighborhood Night at the Leech, and we did an activity with our 17 recognized neighborhoods called Get to Know Your Neighbor. And the better part of that was we were able to share our messaging at the Tuesday night concert series. We were there for the 6:00 to 6:30 time slot, and 1,300 people were there that night and got to hear a lot about Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. Our second partnership was the National Neighborhood Night out in August. So a few of you at the various events, Cora and myself, split those so that we could have representation at each of the 10 neighborhood parties that occurred that night. And then we do have one other project that I'm really hopeful, we have a block party trailer. I've talked about it in the past. We've got, we're working on getting all the supplies for neighborhoods to host a block party in one trailer that can be dropped off, and we're close. We've got 10,000 raised of the 12 that we need, and I've got a couple asks out there, and I'm hopeful by the end of this month that we will meet that goal for bringing the block party trailer to Oshkosh. The really big news for Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods that you've been waiting for is we purchased a house. We bought a house in the Stevens Park Neighborhood Association. This is the picture on the day that we closed, and as you can see, we have some work to do. But what we're doing there is trying to build relationships and get partnerships in place to help rehab this house, uplift the entire neighborhood by fixing this particular property in the Stevens Park, or Stevens Park Neighborhood Association. In addition to that, we also put an offer on a duplex on Main Street. We thought it was initially going to be taking a multifamily home back to a single-family dwelling, does not fit that. It was built as a duplex. We would keep that and be able to potentially offer quality, affordable rental options near downtown. Haven't closed on that one yet, so I can't go further with it. We are constantly trying to get our presence out in the community, still working on bringing people together. Spoke with the Southwest Rotary and Kiwanis groups. Realtor presentations are the ones that truly are making a difference. We spoke at First Weber, Exit Realty, and Beizer. The sold-on Oshkosh and the other rehabilitation program loans are still a well-kept secret, but we're working on them and are recognizing a uptick in those as well. So it's happening, it's just a process. We were at the June and July Oshkosh Farmers Market, will be there again in September. Our neighborhood events were already talked about, but the one that I haven't hit on is September 28th, as instituted by Jimmy Carter, is National Good Neighbor Day. The good news with this one is September 28th falls on a Saturday this year, so we are going to again be at the Oshkosh Farmers Market, and we're working with the Oshkosh Herald to do a, a, have people take the pledge to be a good neighbor, and not just be a good neighbor, but identify I will do whatever they believe being a good neighbor would mean to them. So again, promotion in the Herald for the four weeks leading up to that will help us get a little bit more recognition out there, but National Good Neighbor Day, September 28th, mark your calendars. We're also scheduled to work with the Oshkosh North Communities Program this fall. Their students are going to be involved in an awareness campaign for Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. So we've been busy. That's the good news. You can follow us on our website or various social media, contact us via phone, email. You can visit us at 404 North Main Street, Suite 605, up until October 15th. And then we're looking to move in with our Greater Oshkosh friends at the 100 North Main Building, Suite 103, which is part of the Greater Oshkosh suite in the 100 North Main Building. Think it'll be a great partnership to further develop. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor Herriman?
Thank you. Not a question, but a compliment. I think Councilmember Allison Osby and I were the only ones that are in council when we started trying to get a neighborhood programs going. And we worked with Neighborhood Works out of Racine, I believe, and that didn't take off. But since you've come on board as the executive director, it's just blossomed, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. 15 months on the job.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's what I think we thought we wanted to see, and now with getting into the home rehabs, I know there's, there was one, I think we did one on Bone Street, right?
Bone.
And then two on Bone, correct?
Yes.
And so now you got in the actual neighborhoods now.
Yes.
Association. The two that were done actually are now in the new Menominee North neighborhood, I believe. But anyways, congratulations.
Thank you. We do have a new neighborhood association just to the west of Menominee North that has set September 28th, National Be a Good Neighbor Day as their organizing day.
Oh, great.
So looking forward to bringing another one on board.
Excellent.
I do have a question, Pam, and that is, so you mentioned that the house that was purchased is in Stevens Park. Is there a neighborhood plan for Stevens Park, or how did you come about with the decision to go there?
It was a for sale by owner, and so because it was in a neighborhood association, we were made aware of it through the neighborhood association, and it's been an eyesore in that neighborhood for quite some time. And so we evaluated it as a, one of those opportunities, taking one of the worst on the, on the block and making it the best.
Mr. Davis, does Stevens Park have a formal neighborhood plan?
Yes.
Yes.
They do?
Yes.
Well, congratulations. That's what, four, five now?
I believe it's five.
All right. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have two public hearings. The first one is 19472. Do we have anyone registered for 19472, Pam?
No, we do not.
All right. So I'll read this three times. Approve final resolution vacating Rath Lane east of North Koller Street. 19472, approve final resolution vacating Rath Lane east of North Keller Street. Keller, Koller. I've heard it both ways.
Go either way.
Third time, 19472, approve final resolution vacating Rath Lane east of North Keller Street. So bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right, seeing none, can we please call the roll?
Mugirauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herriman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
The second public hearing is 19473. Approve final resolution for special assessments for asphalt overlay relating to contract number 19-23. Do we have anyone registered for this public hearing?
No one is registered.
All right, thank you. That's Madison Street, A, Merritt Avenue to Northwestern Avenue, B, Northwestern Avenue, Madison Street to Mount Vernon Street, and C, West 10th Avenue, Oregon Street to Minnesota Street. Second reading, 19473, approve final resolution for special assessments for asphalt overlay relating to contract 1923. Third and final reading, 19473, approve final resolution for special assessments for asphalt overlay relating to contract 19-23. We have a motion and a second from council?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Next, we have the first opportunity for citizens... Call the roll.
Mugirauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herriman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
First opportunity for citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items not on the council meeting agenda and are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and the common council or that the common council may address at future meetings. Must not include endorsements of any candidates or electioneering. Do we have anyone registered?
Yes. Andy Levitt, 1337 Washington Ave.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I really do appreciate the opportunity to address you today. I'm here really to, to let you know that the population of this city is about to increase by 4% this weekend. 4%. We're going to be moving in about 3,000 students onto our campus, UW Oshkosh. 1,700 of those students are, are brand-new freshmen, so which actually has been great. We've been increasing the size of our freshman class each successive year here for the last couple of years. couple of years, which is something that's difficult to do in this economy. There's a lot of folks who are preferring not to go to college at this point here. I'm really excited. I think there's no better place to be in the fall but on a university campus, just anywhere you go. But I want to give you some stats I think that are going to be very interesting. First one is that as we stand here tonight, we are in our fifth year of our general education program called University Studies Program, and there is a part of this called Quest Three, and that's where first semester sophomores volunteer, go out into the community for service learning opportunities. And the numbers are pretty interesting. In five years, 6,167 Titans have provided 103,675 hours of community service, and that equals to 4,320 full days. So this is an essential learning outcome for our students. As a matter of fact, I think it's one of the reasons why we have over 90% retention rate of our in-state students who graduate from the institution remain, certainly here in the area, but also in the state. And almost 40% of our out-of-state students remain in Wisconsin after graduating. So it's something that we're very, very proud of. So civic engagement is a lot. We have, just from LinkedIn alone, we're able to identify over 1,700 of our graduates who just belong to seven different companies within the city. And so it's pretty profound in that way as well. So we, of course, last year, we had our largest graduating class in the history of the institution, a 2,500 students, something we're very, very, very proud of. Again, we're creating the talent that goes into this region here. This is interesting. We did a marketing survey this year because we were in a process of doing a little bit of rebranding as a result of coming together with two other campuses. And we found out some interesting things about Oshkosh students themselves. Oshkosh campus students perceive the value of their experience around not only the quality of the instruction, but also the city-campus connection. So years and years and years ago, we talk a lot about the town-gown relations not being very good. But as a matter of fact, students at UW Oshkosh really do appreciate the relationship that they have, this university has, with this city. So that's really terrific. Your predecessors were right to fight to get the Oshkosh Normal School almost 150 years ago, and leaders saw the university as a force for a better future, and I'm sure you do as well 150 years later. We're going to be celebrating our sesquicentennial, 150th anniversary in 2021, and it's something I would very much like to partner with the city on, and certainly in one event. And that'll be on September 12th, 2021, which is the 150th anniversary of our first class. And I think it would be great to do a town gown picnic or some type of activity that we can bring everybody together here. So what I'd like to do is encourage everybody to take advantage of the university in terms of this, in terms of enjoying visual arts, and music, and theater, and athletics, and speakers, and all the things that we have to offer, that our university is open, and we would very much love to have the visitors on campus. So with that, I'm just proud to be a part of this university. I imagine some of you are UW Oshkosh alumni, so raise your hand if you're an alum. Now, we have a stout over here, right? Yeah. So there's a couple of you. Very good. Yeah, very good. With that, I'll yield back and say hail Titans. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else registered?
Yes. Deb Martin, 164 Wildwood Drive.
Good evening. I come with some invitations. One handout that's going out now, I'm part of the Oshkosh Community Toastmasters. We're called Water City Speakers, and I'd invite you to visit us sometime. We meet at Fox Valley Tech twice a month, and the information is in the brochure. Toastmasters is in 140 countries around the world. The other club that we have here in Oshkosh is that Oshkosh Corporation. So that's a closed club for people that work there, but this is a community club, and I helped start both of them. So I'm pretty proud of it and hope that you'll share that with maybe the people you work with or your neighbors and see if anyone would like to join us. It's open at any time. The next invitation I have for you is, I'm part of a small group called Fill the Gap. I'm going to email you this information next week, or tomorrow, because I didn't make copies. It's called Fill the Gap. We have a presentation coming September 16th and 19th by Al Rolfe. He is a social worker with the Salvation Army, and he's doing a presentation called The Culture of Poverty. It's been very successful. We've had this presentation about four other times in the spring and summer. We're focusing on faith leaders in our community, but certainly it's open to anyone, to help us better understand the difference between poverty, middle class, and wealth, and how solutions that we have in one category may not fit in another category. So it's been really well-received, and we're going to do it again. One of the other things that we're doing in Fill the Gap is, I found out Steve Segmeister, many of you might know him, retired police officer from Oshkosh, he has a program where he rehabs bicycles. And then people are referred to the program from the Salvation Army or other places that may need a bike to get themselves to work, or maybe to get to school. He told me he averages about 400 bikes a year that he gives away, he and some other people that work on this. The problem, when I went to visit him in June, he was out of bikes. He didn't have any more bikes to rehab. So we put a little program, we put it in the Oshkosh Herald, and we also sent it to all the faith groups that we're connected with and said, "If you have a bike and you want to donate it, please donate it to Steve." Now, how to get that done? Chereth is a nonprofit here in Oshkosh, and they opened a store on Sawyer in a strip mall almost across from the Zion Lutheran Church. Anyway, they're willing to take a bike at any time, and then they'll contact Steve, and he'll come pick it up. But so, another thing to share with people you know, he'll fix the bikes and give them out if we can just get in more. We know transportation is a problem in Oshkosh for people that don't have a car. For instance, I'm one of the volunteer drivers for Catch a Ride, and one of the gentlemen that I give a ride to some of the time works at Walmart, and he can take the bus to work, but he gets off work at 8:00, 9:00, or 10:00 o'clock at night, so he needs a ride home. And it's been so fun over the last months to just, the improvement in his self-esteem and his confidence that he's gotten this new and better job, and by us being able to get him a ride home after his work. So consider those invitations. I will send you some follow-up information. One other invitation that I will also send to you is on September 13th at UW Oshkosh. I'm part of a group that's putting on a presentation on human trafficking awareness. We have a national speaker who's also an author, Teresa Flores is coming, and she's speaking at UWO on Friday evening, the 13th. And then on Saturday morning, she'll be at the Bordelli Center in Appleton to speak as well. So we're hoping a lot of people will come out for that, just to have an awareness of what's going on. We know the Highway 41 corridor is huge for sex trafficking happening in our state. And so anything we can do to have an understanding ourselves and then share that with our neighbors to protect our young people is, I think, important. And thank you so much for the work you do.
Thank you, Deb.
No one else is registered.
No one else? All right. So next, we move on to consent agenda. Do we have anyone registered to speak on consent agenda?
No one is registered.
All right. Bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, I'd like to poll 19478, please.
Any others? All right. So we will... Did you want to discuss that, or you want it completely bold?
I just want to, the only thing that I have is I just want to thank staff, thank the university for being such a great neighbor, and thank Amy at CVB. This is awesome. I applaud everybody, so nice job, staff. And I'm sorry the chancellor left. I wanted to thank him before he left, but the university constantly impresses me on what a good neighbor they want to be, so thank you all.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. That was one I was going to echo that, but you said it. 19478, for those of you watching at home, is the approved agreement with the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh for a payment in lieu of room tax. They call those pilots, and we only have a few in the city, so we are certainly very happy to see another one come through. All right, very good. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right, can we please call the roll?
Muglerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curried Seven.
All right, pending ordinances, 19494, Approve Zone Change from Suburban Mixed Use District to Duplex Residential, 6th District ER 6 for property located at South 2400 Block of Amro Road. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered for 19494?
No one is registered.
All right, back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right, seeing none. Can we please call the roll?
Muglerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curried Seven.
Next is 19495, also pending ordinance, Approve Zone Change from Urban Industrial District UI to Urban Industrial District with a Plan Development Overlay, UIPD at 1016 Witzel. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered for 19495?
No one is registered.
All right, back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right. Please call the roll on 19495.
Muglerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curried Seven.
The last one is 19496, On Pending Ordinances, Approve Appointments of Alternates to City Boards and Commissions. Anyone registered to speak on this one?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I think councils had quite a bit of discussion on this, being that it was part of a workshop, and this is for the purpose of adding up to two alternates to those boards and commissions that don't already have them. So, and we have no one registered, we will call the roll on 19496.
Muglerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curried Seven.
Next, we have three new ordinances. There will be no formal action tonight. 19497, Modify Parking Regulations on Nap Street. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right. And just a quick, maybe Mr. Robbie or Mr. Davis, what are those modifications briefly on Nap Street?
I'll handle those.
All right. Okay, Mr. Rolla.
Mr. Collins, I don't see Jim here, and we talked about it. This is on Nap Street, no parking on both sides of the street from West Fifth Avenue to 26 feet south of West Fifth Avenue. It's just in that immediate area. There's a little bit of congestion near the church and whatnot.
Okay. No action on that. Moving on, 19498, Approve Ordinance Permitting Appointment of Non-Voting Youth Members to City Boards and Commissions. Do we have anyone registered on this?
No one is registered.
All right. Would council care to discuss this at all? I mean, we're not voting on it, but are there any questions or discussions? Are all clear? Good. 19499?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If, I think maybe just for those at home, those watching what it is and an explanation of that.
Absolutely.
Even a basic one for myself, and if anybody wants to chime in, just to give a good explanation, just that we're potentially looking at adding non-voting members, you know, for youth to some of our boards and commissions, to allow for civic engagement for our youth and to better themselves, and to have a say on some of the decisions and the impact that decisions that, you know, staff makes and those boards and commissions refer to us for approval, just to engage some of the youth. So if you know of any, if this passes in two weeks, which I think after our discussion, I would be confident in saying it should, if you know of any youth that are interested in serving their community in one way or the other, we'd love to have some applications, so.
Well, certainly, you got to jump on me there. I was waiting till it was approved, but we did have a discussion at our workshop for boards and commissions. There had been some discussion earlier last year about a mayor's youth council. This is a little bit different format in terms of having those youth representatives rotate through multiple boards and commissions, so a little bit different than the original idea, but certainly, yes, we will be looking for those applications upon approval by council. Councilmember Heschel?
Sure, and if I remember recalling and reading, the age group that we're looking for is the ages 15 to 19 years of age, correct?
Yes.
So that's a wide, it's a wide range of youth that we're asking to become more involved in the community.
It's only a one-year commitment, too, so.
Sure.
All right, 19499, again, new ordinance, no formal action, Approve Zone Change from Suburban Mixed Use District to Suburban Mixed Use District with a Plan Development Overlay, SMUPD at 237 North Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone registered on 19499?
No one is registered.
All right. So our next section is new resolutions. We have Resolution 19500, Approve Specific Implementation Plan for a Monument Sign at 1016 Witzel Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone registered, Pam?
No one is registered.
All right, back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right. Please call the roll, 19500.
Muglerower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curried Seven.
Next is Resolution 19501, Approve Land Disposition of Surface Property to Prime Space LLC, northeast corner of Rath Lane and North Keller Street. Plan Commission Advisory Parks Board recommend approval. Anyone registered here on that item?
No one is registered.
All right, back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Well, I do have some questions and comments. We did see this at Plan Commission, and Advisory Parks Board did review this. After looking at the comprehensive plan, Chapters 4, 7, and 8, the objectives related to land use, utilities, and agricultural natural resources, there are Chapter 4, 6.1, 6.4, UCF 3.13, 3.14, UCF 5, ANC 2, 3, and 4, related to wetland and sensitive environment. Just looking at this, perhaps, Mr. Davis, you want to talk a little bit, or perhaps, Ms. Nyforth, about this particular piece and how it is distinctly separate from the vacation of North Rath Lane, vacation that we spoke to earlier?
Yes, I'd be happy to begin answering that question. If you recall, the Keller Avenue extension was planned as part of the Oshkosh Corporation Global Headquarters Project. We hired an engineering firm that identified what we needed to do to provide adequate access. One of the recommendations was to expand Keller Street so that we could have enough right-of-way, and then they designed the swing of that, swing is probably not the engineering term, but the curvature of that road over to the front entrance to the global headquarters. We anticipated it to be a much quicker swing, but as it turned out, it was a broader swing for the amount of traffic they're carrying, so it left a little area south of Keller Street and east of Keller Street that had been parkland, kind of separated by the right-of-way, an the golf course drainage system. Uh, and that drainage system didn't drain all that well, that's why a wetland actually was created there. It was, uh, a soil that was created, so the water would pond there and created a wetland that still was mowed as part of the golf course, but it is technically a wetland since we had the entire area delineated. Uh, and then, to follow up with that, you can see that the area that we were looking to expand, uh, for possible development on an economic development side, uh, included access to that, to the east side of Keller. And the developer is desirous of an access onto Keller. Uh, the, the only, uh, sensible location for, or a safe, uh, access and, uh, less interference with pedestrian traffic would be on the east side. Uh, and that Rath Lane access may or may not continue to exist at where that Rath Lane, uh, right-of-way had been located. Uh, he's looking at developing everything south of, uh, Keller and east of, uh, Keller up to the, the property line to the east, which is a separate, uh, property developer who has a separate access onto Keller. Uh, that's a lot of background. Did I cover all the points that you were looking for?
I guess, um, just to clarify, um, wasn't there some discussion that access could be utilized off of the Rath Lane vacation portion to his lot to the south?
Uh, yes. He doesn't have any specific plans submitted yet, uh, but at this point Rath Lane, uh, the location of where Rath Lane is all still concrete, it could be used for the access point to his development, but he hasn't come up with a final development. Uh, he hasn't designed the buildings, the stormwater management of the parking areas, so whatever I'm talking about is pure speculation at this point, until he actually, uh, figures out how he wants to develop the land. Rath Lane is, seems to be a logical location for that access, but it's not the only access that could be, uh, provided to that parcel.
But it is currently undevelopable by itself.
Yes, it is undevelopable.
It could revert to being developed if it's, if it's combined with that southern portion, south of Rath Lane.
Absolutely.
With setback requirements.
Yes.
I'm quite, I'm curious about, last year, Act 183 was passed, and I think it was after we had the workshop on the traffic impact analysis, which did not specify with regard to that outlet. It only specified the vacation of the portion of Rath Lane and the access and some of that, um, on the south end. Would those exemptions for permitting for smaller wetlands, less than, I think it's two or five acres, then allow that developer to fill that in with no further permitting?
I hate to speak for the DNR on this particular case, but I think it is small enough where they could get a general permit, but they have to make that application. We can't do that on speculation, as the, we have, you actually have to have a project proposed to DNR before them to grant any kind of permit. But in general, I believe that's how the process would work. You are correct.
I guess my only other questions would be, um, with regarding to all the references in our comprehensive plan about preservation of wetlands, we know that one acre sequesters, like, 5,000 tons of carbon. This half acre would sequester, like, 2,500 tons roughly. Does it have any concern for staff that we have, um, that we would be giving up that wetland?
I'm speaking as, uh, individual staff member, I can't speak for all staff, but the quality of this wetland is not high. My expectation is you'll actually get more carbon sequestration if it's left as open, uh, green space or part of a stormwater management, uh, system, because you will have to treat the stormwater management to a much higher level than it is currently. They'll have to create some kind of bioswale system to, to create this, uh, proper stormwater quality requirements. Uh, and it does generally drain to the north, so my expectation is when he brings a site plan in, you'll see a nice bioswale that has more wetland plants than, than, than exist currently on the site, which is basically just, uh, grass. Uh, Public Works will review it for stormwater management quality, and there's a list of plants that are wetland plants that can be included in a, in a bioswale. So, my expectation, you'll see more of that to the north, and I think, uh, the water quality and, will improve for that entire site, because none of that is, is regulated at all. It's all just sheet drained off, uh, so that the water quality actually for the neighborhood and certainly for the Fox River, upper Fox River management, uh, area will improve based on the redevelopment of this site.
And that sounds wonderful if, with a big if, Mr. Steiner would agree to do that.
Yes. The private property owner does have the final say as to when they're scheduled to develop, but, uh, my expectation is, uh, he fought in court to get that property and he wants to develop it, so, uh, my expectation is he's not gonna, uh, take too long to submit plans and get this project going. It's a prime location, we're developing the last leg of that, uh, access to Oshkosh Corporation. The Oshkosh Corporation headquarters will open this fall, and my expectation is that'll be a very attractive corner for a lot of, uh, corporate business park type of tenants.
Councilmember Pascal?
Sure. So what I think I'm hearing you say is that because we're going to be developing that lot, that it becomes, um, it somehow becomes a cleaner, a cleaner area for, for wetlands. We're gonna do a better job than what it is now.
The stormwater quality should improve, because right now, no, there is no stormwater quality.
So, I, I guess, this is just one step in the beginning of, uh, the reconstruction of that corridor in regards to along, um, Oshkosh Avenue and Oshkosh Corping in there and the Lake Shore Park. And so my concern becomes that this is just one wetland that, that may be, come a little bit better with, um, with a, with a, with what I, what I perceive a smaller construction project, that then is then coupled with several other construction projects that are gonna take place, uh, next to it. So my, my question is the, the long-term impact of reconstructing that corridor in regards to, um, improving the wetlands in that area, partially because, um, the park is gonna be right there, and the park is gonna take anywhere from 10, 15, 20 years to develop. Um, what, uh, what type of benefit do we have that, that street along Oshkosh Ave and Kohler area is going to be developed a lot quicker than the park itself? Does that, does that make sense?
It's hard to speculate as to how quickly the private development will take place, because there's a lot of economic factors that we really don't have any control over. Uh, but based on the work that's, uh, been submitted to date and the plans that have been, uh, reviewed, I think it's a very, uh, it's a corridor that's seeing a lot of interest from developers and tenants and buyers, so, uh, I think it's going to be going on as long as, uh, uh, land is available. And as I've indicated, the, uh, even the developer to the east, uh, there's, he has to provide the stormwater quality benefits that don't exist over there right now. Uh, they've had to do that with the, uh, Casey's, and they'll have to do that with any other development, with the hotel or any other, uh,
Sure.
outlaw development in that area. So my expectation is you'll actually see, uh, more stormwater quality, uh, improvements based on these, uh, developments. And they will feed into the city's, uh, stormwater system. It doesn't actually go into the park, uh, they go in, it goes into a pipe that empties into the, into the lake slash Fox River. Uh, so you'll actually see the benefit more in the water quality of the Fox River, uh, which would have a, a good impact on the, the Riverwalk we're building, because I like to have a Riverwalk that has a very nice clean river, uh, high water quality for people to enjoy in the Riverwalk. So, I think our, our goals are the same regarding the redevelopment prospects and a high environmental quality, because that's the way you get people to attend, uh, Riverwalks, that go to parks, you have to have a high quali, environmental quality to those parks, and I think this will actually help.
So, I'm a, I, I'm gonna assume that I'm a layman here, so, um, just, when I think of wetlands and I think, and I think of stormwater, uh, quality, you know, development and stuff, I kind of think of two different things. You know, I understand that, you know, our stormwater goes into a certain place, um, and our wetlands are made to retain and to, um, hold back certain things. So, um, just for essence, just kind of explain that a little bit in regards to the, the difference or even the similarities that, that, that we might be, you know, talking about here.
I think it's more similar, uh, bioswales are, are kind of artificially created wetlands, but they don't stay wet, and I don't want to step on all the civil engineers that say there's a different, oh, a bunch of different types of bioswales that can be created, but they're trying to create the same water quality effect, and that wetlands do clean the stormwater, and bioswales are designed to, to clean the stormwater as well. Uh, both have been studied, uh, I would hazard, my, my experience tells me a grass swale doesn't give you a whole lot of environmental, uh, improvement for the stormwater runoff. It depends on a lot of things on the stormwater, but a grass swale is still just a grass swale. Typically, you're gonna have some kind of, uh, engineering done for the, not only the, uh, plants, but also the material that they're planted in and the underdrain system that collects, uh, the stormwater runoff. Uh, that typically does a better job than just a grass ditch, uh, when it comes to, uh, cleaning water. Uh, and certainly, I think it provides a better environment than a grassy area, uh, because you're not gonna get hardly any kind of, uh, wildlife growing in a grassy ditch. It's typically cut to less than eight inches.
Okay, thank you.
Before Mr. Muggerauer, I just, um, two things I just want to point out, and that is, that makes a lot of sense. The sequencing of this though, is if we back up and talk, look at what council was trying to accomplish by preserving the remaining acreage that was not developed by Oshkosh Corporation, was about preserving that for, um, the park development. The park development hasn't yet been decided. There's some beautiful plans out there, but there's not a final decision on that. And, and I just hesitate with us making a decision to dispose of this half acre. We have already done some swaps and, um, started to shave off some of those acreage that we said we were gonna preserve. So, it's, it's concerning to me. Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, for those that, uh, that are listening through Oshkosh Media on the multiple channels that they stream, there's a little plug for the guys back there. Um, what we're talking about is swapping some land. And, in a nutshell, what we're talking about is, we've got about a half acre of man-made wetland that is undeveloped by itself. Yes?
Could I chime in one?
Absolutely.
The size of the wetland is a lot smaller than a half acre. It's, it's a few thousand square feet of that grassy area.
My apologies, thank you, Mr. Davis. Um, but generally, a undevelopable lot, uh, given its size, given its location, given its proximity to the streets and the other right-aways and, and such. And in exchange for us giving up that, we're gonna get a, about a tenth of an acre of some very valuable land along North Kohler, at least the right-of-way to, um, use at our disposal in the future if we so need to. And, while I can appreciate, uh, the mayor's comments on, uh, preserving as much, uh, of the remaining parkland as possible, of course, um, the way that this road was, um, altered by the Army Corps of Engineers and the other engineering firms that were part of this, um, this piece of land serves no useful purpose other than, um, being a green space that the city would then need to keep up perpetually long-term. Um, it's a no-brainer to, to switch this, to, to, um, do this land swap to me, and I'd be completely supportive of this once, uh, once we take up a vote.
Just a follow-up math question. Um, so with this half acre and the vacation of that portion of Rath Lane that would be going back to Dyna Place LLC, what is that total? Because it's not a, just the half acre, because it's also that portion of Rath Lane as well, correct? Is that like a .3? So we're almost a total acre, right?
No.
The half acre is the vacated right-of-way and that excess land. Um, the excess land is only a .3 acres.
Okay, so total, together, it's a half acre.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? Can we please call the roll?
Aye.
May I?
Oh. Councilmember Pascal?
Sure, thank you. Um, councilmember Muggerauer brought up the, kind of the land swap, so to say. Um, the only concern that I have with doing that is that that's, that's not on our agenda tonight. And so, I know that's been talked about and it's been discussed with us, um, but just because we made this decision tonight does not guarantee us that we get that swath of land that is very much to our benefit. So, that's kind of the, the concern that I have with that, and so, um, if, if the city manager could address that, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Pascal. Uh, it is, it's specifically referenced in the, in the resolution, uh, item four, uh, the requirement is that, uh, one of the conditions is that the city approves a right-of-way dedication on, uh, North Kohler. So that would be, that would be a part of it, this. So that's, that's what was discussed and anticipated way back in January of 18 when we, um, we had our presentation by KL Engineering.
City manager, um, I actually watched that presentation and the follow-up, and they were specifically addressing the Rath Lane. They did not get into, nor was the packet including, that section of land. It was only specific to the Rath Lane vacation. Uh, not trying to be disagreeable here, but, um, it, it's not clear when we are saying one is conditional upon the other, um, in that January 2018, and then also the February 27th, follow-up on that. Can you maybe elaborate or talk more?
Sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to. Uh, when the report was prepared by KL Engineering, at that time, there were, there were no specific routes identified for North Kohler. Uh, the anticipation was that there would be additional right-of-way necessary for the acquisition of North Kohler, uh, and Oshkosh Avenue. And there was a question specifically asked by councilmembers, well, is this, where is this cost gonna be taken care of? And staff stated specifically that they would be done through land swaps, and that's exactly what we're proposing this evening.
That's correct, that's correct.
We did do one land swap, and there was not a specific what that would entail in terms of future land swaps, so, um, councilmember Miller, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess I look at this a little differently than everybody else has talked about. Um, I look at this as an orphan parcel, um, that, that can be better used, um, by this developer, and it, it sounds to me, and again, I'm not an expert, it sounds like Alan, you're definitely an expert on this, that the developer himself is gonna turn this into a, a, a better thing for, for, for nature. Is that, is that accurate? Does that sum that up?
For water quality, specifically, absolutely.
Okay, so I mean, I, I look at this very simply. I, I want to be a good neighbor to business, it sounds like a win-win here, and, um, I want to, I want to let business owners know that we want to work with you, we want to be cordial and, and, uh, open to things like this, so, um, I will certainly be supporting this, and thank you for your time.
Councilmember Miller, just a quick question, when, um, and obviously, uh, councilmember Pascal, um, when parks discussed this, as parks' mission to preserve open space and land, was there any, I guess, consideration for that mission in making the decision to make the recommendation to dispose of when we are in a deficit of open space? Councilmember Pascal?
Sure, I'll give you my accounting of what, of what I felt took place in the Parks Board meeting, uh, but if Mr. Miller wants to add to that, and also if Mr. Miller would like to add to that as well. Um, my, my feeling in the Parks Board meeting was that, uh, this, this small piece of land, um, though is parks' land now, uh, was not necessarily, um, going to create that much of a difference in regards to the, the broad spectrum of the project. Um, and, and, uh, the majority of the Parks Board felt that it was comfortable in moving away from, uh, maintaining that swath of land. I voted present in that, because I was concerned with what I was, what was actually in front of me and not fully understanding it, uh, as I still am tonight a little bit, so, which is concerning to me. So, um, but, uh, but that was the general, would you agree?
I, I would agree with you 100%.
The general consent of the board is that... The general consent of the board is that this small loss of parks' land would not impact the greater project of Lake Shore Park.
Do we have a total number of acres left after this disposal?
I don't believe we do. But we had estimated that there would be approximately 60 acres available for development when we were originally doing this, and we're probably still in that ballpark.
I guess perhaps it's time to call the questions, so please take the roll. Mugar.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Again, present.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
No.
Carrie, five, one present, one no. Next, we have council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. Future agenda items including the Oshkosh Area School District and Common Council Meeting. Again, we are to be determined.
Yeah, we're getting close. I think we're trying to see if we can do it on October 30th, but it's not firm yet. So I didn't want to commit to it in, on the agenda.
And the fire staffing study.
I believe that Chief Stanley will be getting the, he's got the final, final draft for his review that he's reviewing, and I think it'll be finalized by next week. So you'll probably have it by the end of next week, so you'll have a, you'll have your copy for review purposes, and we'll be ready for September 24th.
Okay. Next, Deputy Mayor Herman has biannual review of mayor and council salaries discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members that were on the council back in June of 2015 may remember Resolution 15-301, where we approved council pay increase along with the mayor increase in that memorandum. I think Mr. Fitzpatrick sent out to all council members attachments with that resolution, both 6415, 13015, 51715. Bottom line is every time there's a mayor oral election, the council at that time had the opportunity to discuss council salaries and the mayor's salary through some type of ad hoc, small committee. I was on, I was on the first one with former Mayor Cummings and Mr. Fitzpatrick's office. The reason I'm bringing it up is there was some question when this got sent back out to us to whether we did this after the previous mayor. And according to the memo, no one wanted to bring it back up. So the bottom line is, is there any interest in this council looking at the pay scale of city council members and the mayor? If not, we'll just wait till the next election. But the bottom line, and one of the reasons we put that on here, was there was like almost 10 years with no salary increases whatsoever, and, and the duties and responsibilities of the council were getting more and more, more boards, commissions, more meetings, more invites, which is all good, but it does take time from council members' personal lives and other duties that, you know, we all have. So I guess I'm open to discussion, to, do we want to form a committee to look at salaries and compensation for council and the mayor? And if Mr. Fitzpatrick could just kind of re-explain to council how, if we move forward with, say, a salary increase, which I'm not supportive at this time, but if we did, what is the cycle of when those pay changes would take place?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think you described it very well, and the only thing I think I might be able to add is, just to clarify for people who might not understand why it's set up on that cycle, is, is because state law is structured in such a way where sitting elected officials can't give themselves raises. That's kind of how it's structured. So the idea would be if the council sees fit to provide a raise for future council members, then they need to make that known, and then it takes effect with the next election. So that's, that's really the purpose behind this kind of delayed reaction to the analysis because it's rooted in state.
Right. So, so that being said, if we move forward with a pay raise, those council members elected in this spring's election would be eligible for a pay raise?
Correct.
And the rest of the council would have to wait until the next election, which would be 2021, correct? So half the council gets a pay raise one cycle, half the council, and now mayor, gets a pay raise in the other cycle.
Right.
So that's kind of how that cycle works every other year, so just let everybody know.
And additionally, you know, when we were talking about the, the research in the original committee, it hadn't been looked at for a while. And during that hiatus, the structure of the direct elector, election of a mayor was implemented. So there was some concern that maybe the differential between council members and the mayor should be looked at more specifically. So that was really another added component of the analysis, another rationale to take a look at it at that time because it hadn't been looked at kind of through those lenses before. So that was, that's just a little more background about what the thought process was when it was analyzed back in 2015.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Fitz, can you tell everybody what we make? Because I know I'm certainly not worth whatever that number is, but I'm sure everybody else is.
Yeah, I think the resolution in 2015 increased the amount for council members to $5,000 a year and for the mayor to $6,500 a year. So that's, that's what the council members and mayor make now.
Thanks, Fitz.
You're welcome.
And just to add on to that, there are no fringe benefits with the income such as health insurance or any kind of life insurance or any retirement. Extriculately is considered a stipend, I believe, not really a salary.
Well, it's an annual salary.
Annual salary, correct. Okay. I misspoke there. Okay. So there are no other, other ones. And we did do a study, just to reiterate, we did a study back in 2015, and we are below the means of the communities that, at that time, we looked at. And so we're in line. So, you know, this council or future council wants to look at the pay scale, I would recommend that they go back to that same situation, look at other communities, communities our size. Not only just communities our size, how many meetings a year do they roughly attend? How many other groups, committees, things that they might be on, and any other paid expenses that they may get as part of their job as a council member? Or in some cases, there are aldermatic communities also, so.
There were, there were a variety of things that we looked at.
Yep.
We looked at the population, we looked at the form of government, we looked at how we compare for our other employees, what we use as comparables. So we assessed a variety of different dimensions and made the recommendations in 2015.
Sure. Thank you. Councilmember Herman, I want to thank you for bringing this up to us for our reflection. I think I'm, I, I don't, when I, when I ran for city council, I, I didn't do it because of the salary. So that was not at the front of why I did it. I did it because I wanted to serve the Oshkosh community. And though I feel that the salary that we do have comes nowhere near what I think each of us may individually do in our community, again, I'm not doing it because I, because I get paid for it. And so I'm not, I'm not interested in, in raising the salaries for the council or for the mayor. That's just my opinion. And, and I, I think it's one of those conversations that we have maybe once every 10 years and reflect upon it at that time. It doesn't mean that I don't think that it should increase at certain times, but I just don't know that right now is, is the right time. And for me personally, I, I would not be in favor of moving forward around that discussion.
Councilmember Crowsey.
When I first decided to run for council and collect the signatures in 2016, I didn't even think there was a salary. I was just trying to do it for the effort to give a little impact into Oshkosh. And then after I got through the primary, I found out there was a wage, and my kids were excited because we could go buy more toys. So the salary, I don't think is any of our motivations to be on council. I think the value we're giving the city is great, and if it was free or if we got a wage, it'd be equally as good. So I, I wouldn't be interested in any salary increase.
Doesn't look like anybody else is interested in this for now. Doesn't mean it can't be brought back later or at a future council. It was brought to our attention that it hadn't been done in 2017, and I was unaware of that. Some of us weren't here then. I was here in 2017, but I wasn't aware of the 2015 until they brought this forward. So my apologies if I overlooked that previously after the election, and we've addressed it, so we'll move on. Next item is my item that I asked to be placed on the agenda for a possible resolution on gun violence and safety. And so I just want to put this out here for councilors' consideration to consider whether or not we want to support, call on our state legislators and support common sense, universal background checks and/or red flag, common sense safety rules with regard to the governor's proposal recently. Just would like to have that conversation with council to see if there is an interest in putting that forth. Councilmember Crowsey.
I'm all for the advancement of gun safety and gun awareness and common sense gun reform. I think the access to guns to the people that shouldn't possess them are too much compared to other countries. Is there any other cities in the state that have resolutions? Yeah?
Actually, La Crosse did put forth something in September last year, and it was passed by all of the council members.
So we'd be one of the first ones, so that's exciting. Thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess this is a highly political issue, and I, I just don't know if the council should engage in politicking. I, I don't know what seven people can tell our legislature, but I'd like to avoid the politics for this council and for our city, so thank you.
Councilmember Peschall.
Calling it to Mr. Miller. Actually, I feel it's actually one of our priorities as an elected official for the city of Oshkosh is to have these debates locally and to express our opinions, whether it's a majority decision or not through, you know, a resolution. I think it's important that we seek to represent the view of Oshkosh residents in the, in the legislature. And so I, I would warrant, I, I would say I'm fairly open-minded to a plethora of ideas that we should be telling our state legislators and using our, this avenue to communicate with them. So, and, you know, if it builds a greater conversation in our community about mental health, about access to firearms, gun safety, and all of, all of it, if it brings our community together, I'm, I'm all right for it. I think, I think at this point, this is, this is an important topic in our community. And I can play dual sides on this a little bit. As a school board member, it's also very important to me that our students are safe, and we have found that there have been many issues over the years where students have not been safe across the country. And so our district works closely with the Oshkosh Police Department to working, to making sure that our community is safe. And I think this is just one step towards further promoting that idea and also letting people that have control in making that change know that, that they're being, that they could be empowered to do that from our, from our seats representatively. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I see Chief Smith in the front row here. I guess a question to you, chief, is what is the stance, or is there a stance from the Wisconsin Chiefs of Police Association? And what are you hearing in, in the community that maybe we should be aware of as a council in this topic area?
Well, the, the Chiefs of Police Association certainly supports the red flag, red flag law. There is value to us in law enforcement. There are some, there are some details to work out. We, we certainly are not wanting, or suggesting that we should take away anybody's due process, but there is, there are steps that can be taken as it relates to folks who are in mental health crisis, and that's what the red flag law is about. Those persons who are suffering from mental health crisis, and they may possess firearms at that time, and we want to do what we can do to take them out of that crisis and, and take away any, any opportunity for, for harm to come to anybody in the community. And the red flaw, red flag laws that we're seeing throughout the country and, and that are proposed right now are, are really just, in my belief, to, to handle those crisis situations, not as a long-term taking anybody's weapons away from them.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, Mayor, if I could. You know, being a retired law enforcement officer, you know, I dealt in this realm for many, many, many years. Obviously, we could do a resolution, we could support or disdain, I guess, for gun violence and those types of things, but the law changes are going to come out of Madison. And those legislators in Madison are the ones that will, as, as the chief mentioned, the, the red flag laws and background checks and all those types of things, we can't legislate from a local level. We can support that we don't endorse violence, we don't endorse gun violence, we endorse, you know, support for people that have mental health issues or people who have, you know, other AODA issues. I think it's important, but I think we, we have to be careful of what type of stance, you know, legislatively we take. I think it is important to let our legislators know locally, whether we contact our local representatives or even the state, other state representatives. It is important that as a city, we do as much as we can to make our community as safe as possible and provide any assistance that may be available to citizens in crisis or in need, and support our police department, our fire department, and our sheriff's department who deal with this, these issues daily. So I think that's an important piece of that. How that, how that resolution would look would make a determination on whether I would support it at this time or would I, I would not. Thank you.
Councilmember Crowsey.
One more thing. I just think the, the gun violence issue in our country is the accessibility to people that shouldn't have it. I think it is our role as city leaders, as elected officials, in a capacity where we're not influenced by lobbyists or big donors, where we can just be an influence of the majority of the people in this country that want gun reform and common sense gun reform, access to better background checks. I mean, if we're going to make people safer, and if people got to jump through a couple more loops to get something compared to, say, a driver's license, which is harder, I mean, there just has to be some change. Doesn't mean that we're trying to take anything away or take rights away, it's just, not to get into the Second Amendment, right? But it's the right to bear arms. It's not the right to bear everything that's been exposed to this country. And if we can handle it or not, and it doesn't seem like as a country we can handle it, other countries have access to the same type of entertainment, video games, every country has mental health issues, it's just, it's just the access and the overabundance of firearms on the street that shouldn't be in the possession of some of these people. I just believe that we can really make a statement and say, this is what we want, and let's see where it can go with that. And maybe other communities can jump on, and the more voices are heard, the more people feel to what is true and what should happen. So I would support a resolution.
Councilmember Mugar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got to echo Councilmember Herman's statements. You know, for us to issue a statement, a resolution in support of, you know, those that need mental health help, getting that help, you know, condoning gun violence and the such, absolutely supportive of those types of, of messages coming from this council and, and the city. But the moment it looks like a piece of, a piecemeal from a political party is the moment I'm off and out of that discussion. That it should be partisan, nonpartisan, and that it should not echo one political system or one political party's beliefs toward the other. It should just be a, a statement of support for those that need help, that they should get that help, and at the city level that we should do everything possible to assist them in getting that help and to support, as Councilmember Herman said, our, our first responders of all kinds. But the moment it looks political is the moment I'm off of that discussion. But the moment it looks political is the moment I'm off of that discussion.
All right. City Attorney, do you have any questions on where we're at on that?
Am I drafting from, based on this?
So it sounds like there may be some interest in a limited scope of support, if I understand what I've heard tonight.
I know you've done some work and I'd be happy to sit down with you. I will not be at the next council meeting, however, so I don't know that in with the holiday week, I'm not sure if we'll be able to connect to get that done for the next meeting, but...
Okay.
It might have to go to the, the following one depending on your schedule as well.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, thank you, council, for having a difficult conversation. It's not an easy one. Next, we have second opportunity for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right. Councilmember announcements and statements. Rock the block applications for this fall. Pam covered this in, in a, quite a bit of detail earlier about the applications being accepted for Congressfield Neighborhood Habitat, Go HNI, Rebuilding Together and the Congressfield Neighborhood Association. You know, this is a pretty unique situation of collaboration. There's one more town hall meeting left, as she mentioned. That is September 11th at 6:00 PM. Interested residents can fill out those applications. I guess Elizabeth Last is the Habitat contact for that. 235-3535 or eLast@HabitatOshkosh.org. And then just a reminder that regarding the alternates and openings for alternates on boards and commissions, their sustainability, public arts, landmarks, rental housing, parks are still, and we're also still taking applications for the ad hoc special assessments. So I would encourage you to look on that list and see if you have an interest in serving as an alternate. We did mention the purpose of that earlier. And then finally, city manager announcements and statements. Councilmember Pechal?
Sure. First, I'd like to act, ask for a bit of forgiveness. You flew through the city council discussion, direction, city manager and future agenda items really quick after that and then citizen statements, but I wanted to request, if I could, still, some future agenda items.
Oh, my apologies.
So I wasn't necessarily paying that much attention to, but...
Yeah, you got to push that button, buddy.
Yep, thank you. So I wanted to add just to council discussion for the next meeting, discussion on conversion, conversion therapy and potentially limits to that practice in the Oshkosh community. Not trying to create a resolution right now, just trying to create a conversation about it in regards to understanding about it and wanting to give a little bit of time and headway in advance of doing that so that staff knows that they can prepare for that if they so choose to. So, secondly, I want to have a discussion about Oshkosh youth riding, the Oshkosh buses, transit buses and in, in a variety of monetary options, whether it's a fee, whether it's a discounted, a different discounted rate determined on different areas or even potentially just riding the bus for free during, or even during the school year or all year round. However, we want to have that or make that, I want the council and staff to be a part of that discussion. I've done a little bit of work on it already. It's getting to the point where staff and, and myself are beginning to have those conversations. And I, I think it's imperative that as you as a council are part of those, those discussions and those options. So if, you know, for the next meeting, I will provide and I'll have staff provide information that they've gathered in regards to the potential next steps that we could be taking. Nothing formalized, but still a discussion and a potential path. So, thank you.
All right. Anyone else, future agenda items? All right. Next, city manager, monthly utility bills and frequently asked questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the conversion to monthly billing has generated a ton of questions from the public. We have added more information on the water bill than ever before and I think that information is, is generating some genuine questions. There are some concerns about some other things, you know, how did my bill go up? In the, in, I'm comparing last year's or last quarter's, summer usage is generally the highest level of usage. So if you're comparing three months of your current bill to the last, the last quarterly bill you got, it's going to be significantly more in the summer. But people just didn't notice it as much when it was a three-month bill because it just, it got blurred in, in whatever they were getting. I don't regret providing the monthly bills. I think it's great information and if people do a better job of water conservation, you know, more power to them. That's, that's a valuable thing for, for our environment. So certainly want to encourage that, but we are getting a lot of calls. And it's, it's been pretty overwhelming, but a lot of people are like, well, it has to be wrong, it has to be wrong. Please understand that there were some water and sewer and stormwater rate increases that took place over the past year as well. So if you're doing comparisons to last year, you're not going to, it's not going to be an apples to oranges comparison. Secondly, one of the other issues that's gotten some attention is something that is, quite honestly, a very common occurrence. It doesn't happen to everybody, but it's, it's common in, in our experience in, in addressing water. Some people unknowingly have leaks either in their toilets or leaks or leave-on faucets, outdoor faucets, and they run. And a lot of people don't understand that an outdoor faucet, if it's left on, can generate eight gallons a minute. And eight gallons a minute runs into a lot of water after a certain amount of time, literally tens of thousands of gallons. And there's a gentleman online, we invited him to come down to our, our water distribution center and watch us test his meter and it's reading accurately. He insisted that it didn't read accurately. Meters can't over-report, they can only under-report. It's just physically, they can't happen. But there are people who insist that, oh, I can, you know, my water can't be that much used. I don't have a running toilet. I can tell you and I have firsthand experience because I was, it unfortunately happened to me and suddenly my water bill spiked one quarter. I checked it out and said, there's got to be a leak and all you, we used to hand out these pills, these little tablets you can put in your tank. Now we just suggest put a little, put a little food color in your toilet tank. If it goes into the bowl, you have a leak. I mean, it is, it is literally that simple. So I think people maybe can become better educated about potential sources of water leaks, but they do happen and they do cost a lot of money when that happens. There is a credit process and we have all of these available on our website. There's ways to detect a water leak, leak adjustment program, pool adjustment program. So if you're filling your pool and you're not using it, you're using the water but not the sewer, we can give you a credit. There's ways we can give you credit, but you have to go through the process. We just can't, you know, just take you at your word. You have to provide some information. There are a lot of questions that are asked. Our website has a plethora of questions and answers regarding water usage. And lastly, the mayor would make sure I said it because we've talked about it a number of times. Our stormwater bill provides for a credit if you do something like a rain barrel or something. Encourage people to take a look at that option as well. Those are ways you could reduce your, your utility bill. Anything you can do to reduce water usage, we absolutely think that's a great idea. But when you get a spike in your bill, there's nothing else we can do, you've used that water and we have to charge you for it. We can do things on credits, but there's limitations what we can do and we have to follow Public Service Commission regulations and we do. But I would encourage you to take a look under services. There's utilities and we have a whole list of questions and I encourage people to take a look at those.
Thank you. And just before our other council members, I just want to say that I did reach out to Appleton, Fond du Lac and Nina and gave them my usage for the month and got a comparative billing. So if you were in Nina and you had four units of usage, so that's the 100 cubic feet per unit, Nina would have been, I had a bill of $78 this month. We had a little pool in the backyard, so we were a little over our normal water usage. And that would, would be like approximately $80 if you lived in Nina. If you were in Fond du Lac, it would be approximately $68. But Fond du Lac does not have a stormwater residential charge. And then Appleton, right around 60. So we're a little beyond that, but we're not way beyond. So the comparisons were just kind of an interesting thing. Also, here Jake Crowsey, you go ahead.
I'm up.
Yep, you're up.
I try not to dive too much into the Facebook conversations because you make one comment, there's going to be 300 people asking you questions. But there's one thread that I engaged just for a moment today on. A resident said over the fourth, I'm just reading this off my phone, or the fourth July, July 4th through the 8th, you guys probably are aware of this one already. The city claims that 504,000 gallons of water went through their water meter. Where they know, where it went, they don't know. The city said possibly it was a leaky toilet. Obviously, there's a data error, billing error somewhere along the lines there because they wouldn't have 500,000 gallons of water used. And they said the city doesn't want to investigate. So what's the, what's the story? So all these people that didn't show up tonight, no?
Thank you. Thank you for asking the question. Number one, that person exaggerated, they, they got to get their decimal points right. It was 50,000 gallons.
Still.
50,000 gallons, if you do the math for a five-day, that eight gallons a minute, it can, it's very conceivable. It was probably an outdoor faucet. Neighbors go by, they see a neighbor, I don't want to embarrass Mr. Davis. It happened to Mr. Davis at his house. I mean, it, we know it happens and it can be as much as 50,000 gallons.
Is 50,000 comparable to a swimming pool? I mean, if that would be a faucet, the water would be going somewhere.
With the, the water, if it's a hose bib, it's just, it's just getting absorbed into, into your landscaping and that's quite possible. It's very easy. I mean, we just had a discussion earlier about wetlands. Wetlands can, it can absorb a heck of a lot of water. That is the gentleman who we allowed us to, he escorted us down to the distribution center and we, we demonstrated how his meter is accurately reporting. So something happened. A resident could come by and turn off the water and the person doesn't know. It happens quite often. Neighbors do those things for one another. And it did happen and our, we have our statistics that show there was a spike in his water usage. We know that. So those, some people just don't want to believe it, but if you do the math, do eight times 60 times 24, that's how many thousands of gallons of water that could use in a day. And I don't like to believe it, but I didn't like to believe it when I had a $100 extra charge on my bill, our folk showed me exactly. Take this little tablet, Mark, and you'll learn. And I learned the hard way because all of a sudden, the leak was very evident. So those things happen and the more we can do to educate people on how they can prevent it, we got a whole section on ways to detect a water leak. We're happy to do that and encourage people to, to, to be educated about this.
Sorry to embarrass you.
And just to chime in on that particular item.
Especially since he embarrassed you like that.
Yeah, I didn't know this was coming at all. We were on vacation and the neighbor girl that we paid to water our plants just didn't turn the water off at the hose bib. She just let the sprayer, the gun stop. Well, unfortunately, the hose actually sprung a leak. So the, instead of shutting off at the house, it was spewing water out of the, the hose and had to end up, oh, man, trying to, they had to track me down and my sister-in-law had to go over and investigate it because I couldn't do it. So she, she couldn't find anything, any leaks in the house, but when she went in the backyard, there was a lot of water spraying her out of, out of the spigot, the hose wrapped by the spigot. So, long story short, leaks do happen in unexpected ways.
Did you pay the gal, Alan? That's what I want to know. Did you take your money back from having her water the plants?
My wife arranges that. I'm involved with that. She's 12 years old, she waters the plants.
Councilmember Muggerhour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And actually, Councilmember Crowsey spoke to just briefly there as well. By and large, city manager Roloff, has there been any airs that are attributed to the city?
I'm not aware of a...
That you're aware of?
I'm not aware of a single one, but I, I live by the philosophy of broken clocks right twice a day. We have to take every one of these inquiries seriously and, and that's been very trying on our water staff, but they understand that this is part of the transition and we'll get through it and customers can, if you think there's a problem, call us. We will send somebody from water distribution out to help identify a possible leak. And so those are the types of things we absolutely want to do though. So I don't want to discourage people from contacting us, but just so far, we haven't had any, had anything.
Appreciate you making sure we clarified that point. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I would disagree at that point because I was contacted by Condo Association, Riff Road, who disagreed with their condo water bill and the water department did come out, recalibrate their meter and it was wrong on the high side by hundreds of gallons of water. So they recalibrated it, got it correct. So our meters can go out of whack and go over, not always under. And that's proven. Mr. Johnson's your neighbor, I guess he can, he can talk to you about that. He didn't come out, but his number two did. And yeah, our equipment can fail.
Just out of curiosity, was that the new wireless type meter or was it the older style?
I believe it's new because this is a new condo association off of Riff Road. And for our condo associations, the citizens don't know that, I think they do, but there's one meter for the whole number of condominiums and they're responsible to, someone is to read the meter and then distribute the bills amongst all the condo members. And he's been doing it since they moved in and they, he went to do the reading and it was way over from what it had been for the last 10 months or something like that. I'd like to fact-check that, but I don't, I don't have any knowledge to tell you. Whoever does the calibrating of our meters when there's either new ones put in or they're tested or whatever, he's the gentleman that did that. And I specifically was told by the condo association rep that the city was great to work with, took care of the problem and said it was on our end and adjusted the bill accordingly. Okay. I have a handful of other things unless there's any more questions. I just want to make sure we, we go through these in the interest of time. We have the status of outstanding issues, including Oshkosh Corporation. Looks like they're getting close to maybe announcing a grand opening date, plus or minus November 1st. Professional services agreement with Ayers for the Jackson Street Traffic and Safety Corridor Study. It's Ayers associated with, which is an engineering firm to look at the traffic stuff, but they also have a firm that they've hired to assist with the corridor planning for that. That was something that came out of the, the North Jackson Street Homeowners Association, Neighborhood Association. We also have some of the items earlier, Gallup's merit, Strand Associates to work on that, as well as the Sawyer Creek Flood Plane Mapping, Jacobs Engineering Group to work on our plant digester mixing system upgrade, some cooperative purchase of encryption services for our police radios. And of course, our second quarter revenue and expense statements are in your package. We did talk about that last, last week at the, the work session. And then staff's here to give you a brief recap of the July 4th celebration. I think Chief Smith's going to kick it off.
Just, if I could interrupt just real quick. One little reminder, Mark, and that is you were going to add on your outstanding issues, that land disposition follow-up?
Thank you for, I knew you were going to remind me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening once again. I'm here to kind of kick off the, the discussion regarding our Fourth of July celebration that occurred at the Leach Amphitheater, American-made. Park Stricker Mauer is here and our special events coordinator, Kathy Snell is here as well. But just to kind of give you a really quick recap as to what we experienced as a city and also the law enforcement services. As you're aware, we use the Leach Amphitheater, the Pioneer Drive area, Riverside Park, as well as the Riverwalk, as, as our public viewing areas for the, for the fireworks demonstration that occurred. Between the Leach Amphitheater and the activities that occurred there, as well as our viewing stations that we had established, we estimate between 7,000 and 10,000 people attended the fireworks celebration. I'd say probably down, maybe in the lower 7,000, not, obviously, we can't get everybody counted, but we do know that the weather had... but we do know that the weather had some impact upon the, upon the celebration. As a, as a law enforcement agency, we had very few calls for service. I think there were three calls altogether that we had to deal with. The Sheriff's Department indicated that they had very few issues with the boating traffic as well. There were, there were a few persons that were seen crossing the railroad tracks for the Pioneer Drive area, and that's something that we're gonna, next year, if the, if the fireworks continue to be in the same location, we'll address that particular area with probably some more barricade assistance. And we certainly had the, the railroad police out there as well, and they were taking care of the railroad property for us, and that's where we got our, our, our information regarding people crossing the railroad tracks. If you recall, council approved an area on Pioneer Drive for alcohol consumption, and alcohol was permitted by ordinance in the Riverside Park, as well as the Riverwalk. We had no issues. We, we had no alcohol violations that were detected in those areas. We, it was virtually a non-issue for us during this event. And finally, traffic flow out of the event area received very positive comments. We were able to adjust along the way as it relates to the, to the timing of the fireworks. Myself and Mr. Maurer were, were paying attention to the weather. We were able to kind of move it forward a little bit, get the fireworks going early so that we can actually have fireworks. And then the weather came, and everybody was able to, and I think it's a testament to, to both the planning by Sergeant Gordy, as well as our citizens really paying attention to getting out of there. But once the weather hit, we were able to get traffic out, and our traffic pattern worked well, and we really had no issues with traffic leaving the area. And with that, if you have any questions of any of the three of us, we'd be more than happy to take them.
I just have a quick statement. This sounded, I really, really regret missing it. I heard it was really well-received. There were many positive comments. It was cleaned up quick in the morning, seems like major incident-free, many positive comments. So to the organizers and all the work that went into that, thank you.
Anybody else?
That's all staff has, unless you have questions.
Councilmember Pechal?
I actually have one. So, the one, I, I loved the event. I attended the event. I actually agree with your assessment of being able to get in and out of the event as well. I work down, down in that area, I manage Courthouse Apartments, and so I actually had a talk back with my residents at a resident meeting for that, and so they actually expressed much of the same positives that you, that you expressed. I know that I observed when I was in that area that there was a certain level of fireworks that typically are not lit off in that area, and I'm not talking about the big Fourth of July ones, but there were areas where typically you don't have those types of fireworks being lit off. I mean, I, and I'm just suggesting, because of the congregate portion of everything being down there, that there, in my, in my opinion, there was some stuff that, that may have not been lit, should have been lit off in that area. And I know these are hard to regulate because of the, so many people down there. But I was really surprised by the fireworks that were being lit off downtown outside of the actual fireworks, the Fourth of July display.
Are you speaking of private citizens who are lighting off fireworks?
Yes.
We, we receive a lot of those calls, and we, we typically have to chase behind those.
Sure.
And once they fire them, it's, it's, it's very difficult to figure out who's doing it.
Get up and run, go find a new spot.
Yes. And if we find fireworks that are, that, that are not lit, we happen to find them, we will take care of that through an ordinance violation.
Sure.
We will seize those fireworks, but we, we couldn't chase all the fireworks that would occur within the city during the Fourth of July or during the New Year's. We just, we receive a, a huge amount of calls for those, so. It is unfortunate, but it does in fact happen.
And I, and I was just expressing concern of, of, you know, the observance of fireworks that were very large fireworks being, you know, set off in between the 100 North Main Building and, you know, Courthouse Apartments. They were, they were rather large in that, in that area, and I was really surprised by that. And if I'm surprised by that, I, I bet you there's a lot of people that live in that area that were surprised at the, the size of those being lit off right directly in that area. So, just my, my comments. Overall, great event, loved it, my family loved it, heard nothing but positive things about it.
Councilmember Mugarower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I gotta echo that part. It was a great event, attended it with, with my family, and it couldn't have gone better other than some weather, which we can't control. But by and large, city staff, job well done on your side of it, and convey that to your, the, the partners that we had with, I know Rotary and some of the other partners conveyed that, that it was a, it seemed like a job well done, an event well-attended and well-run. I'm gonna put Ms. Snell maybe on the, the hot seat a little bit. I'm gonna ask about a number, what type of special charges, extraordinary charges were assessed to this group for this event? I guess Mr. Maurer could have, but I know she, she kind of runs the show on this, so...
Sure, I actually don't have that with me tonight. I have kind of a, what, I broke down kind of what the city services were for the actual fireworks, not specifically for the event. I can say they were pretty, pretty minimal in the scale of a large event like that, only because of the location. So the American-made celebration itself that the Rotary put on was very separate from the fireworks display. So we were able to kind of break that out as to police services for fireworks that would have generally happened anyway, and in addition to that, then, what actually was there for American-made?
Sure.
Because the American-made celebration was contained within the Leach property, it's similar to a Waterfest night, or a concert held in the Leach. So you have the infrastructure already there, you don't have to, you know, bring in additional things. They did have security that they paid for, in addition to police officers who were assigned to the area. The area in, inside the Leach was part of American-made, but also Riverside Park. So we did have officers out there as well, so they are, they will be billed and are being billed for the extraordinary services, for police services inside River Park for the time of, of the event that they, that they had through up until the fireworks.
Sure. Pretty fair to say it's a significant reduction in terms of past Fourth of July events and Fourth of July charges that had been assessed?
Yes, based on, based on the logistics of the event and the footprint of the event.
And from Chief Smith's comment earlier, a safer event, is that fair to say, for the community and for your officers?
Yes, I would say primarily for traffic, and for the, just the amount of congestion that we had, and the, the, just the nonexistence of any, any alcohol violations that occurred in there. It was, it was a safer event for the community. And just to speak to your comment regarding the billable charges, in, in any event that's occurred in the past as relates to fireworks and such things, is that the city has, has taken responsibility for that portion of it, and for every event in the past that had fireworks associated with it, that was designated a city function, that was not billed back to any event organizer. So it was always, always bifurcated away from any organizer.
Good clarification, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, next.
Mayor, if I could, I guess I'd like to make a couple of comments, and just mainly say thanks to everybody involved, between Kathy, myself, Chief Smith, and all of our staff. Almost every city department was involved with this, from changing logistics, it involved everybody from streets, transit, parks, and so everybody really pulled together, and I think that was very helpful. Talk about the Rotary and the organize, the committee that organized the American-made, they stepped forward and really did a great job. As you mentioned, Riverside Park was cleaned up by about 9:30 that morning, they had garbage stacked in areas that our staff cleaned up by 1 o'clock, so that was very well taken care of. We had numerous businesses and private citizens donate to extend the fireworks show and make it a bigger, better show, so I wanted to thank them for the Festival Foods fireworks to get extended. But also our partners, the Coast Guard, Winnebago Sheriff's Department, there was my, the Rotary, Coast Guard, all of those people really pulled together for us to make sure that the event was safe, and it went off well, and I think we did a pretty good job with it.
Thank you very much. All right, next, the deputy mayor has a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. The common council may convene in the closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, P.1, P. and G, the Wisconsin State statutes to confer with legal counsel. Will run advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation, which a city is or is likely to become involved related to Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc., and/or properly located at 1212 South Main Street in the city of Oshkosh.
All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
No. Second? No. Second? Okay.
I guess we should vote on that.
Yes.
Mugarower?
Aye.
Krausy?
Aye.
Pechal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Ozzy?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven? We'll have our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Bio-break.[1767.62]